I'm not on. Okay, hold on. Good evening. We do have a member of the Minister Alliance with us this evening. Pastor from First Baptist Church. Can you please come forward?
Let's pray. Diller, we thank you for this evening, Father. We thank you for our city, Lord, and every institution and business and organization that makes it what it is, Father. We just thank you for our law enforcement, our first responders, and our, Lord, all those who put their life on the line to keep us safe and to help us have order, Father. And we just thank you for all those who are in leadership and governing, Father. We just pray your wisdom upon this body in a mighty way, Father. They would experience your grace and your mercy, Father, and that everything they say and do would, Lord, I know that their hearts and their desire is for it to further, Lord, this community and benefit and impact the lives of the people in it a positive way. Lord, so I pray your blessing upon this body, upon our city, Lord, and upon our state. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call the April 21st, 2025 Board of Alder Women Meeting to order. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ciara McMichael. Rachel Kilmer.
Here.
Kelly Neto. Tracy Newcomer.
Here.
Pam Pope.
Here.
Melissa Johnson.
Here.
And Mayor Dana Webb.
Here, thank you. The next item on the agenda is new business deletions or continuances. We do not have any of those, so we will move on to public comments.
There are none.
The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. These items are considered on the consent agenda so that members of the Board of Aldermen by unanimous consent can designate routine items to be approved by one motion. Tonight, we have approval of the April 7th, 2025 Board of Alder Women Meeting minutes, expenditures through April 16th, 2025, and the March 2025 financial statement.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Tonight, we have one item of unfinished business. This discussion, consideration, and possible action for Bill Number 25-04 regarding an ordinance declaring the official results of the election held in the city of Oak Grove on April the 8th, 2025. Kim, you have a report?
Yes, this is just the annual ordinance declaring the official results for the election from April 8th for one alderman for each ward for a two-year term, and then one alderman for Ward 3 for a one-year term. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Kim. This is an ordinance unless anybody has any questions.
I move for a first and second reading by title only of Bill Number 25-04.
Second?
We have a motion and a second for the first and second reading of the proposed ordinance by title only. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. City Clerk, would you please read the full title of the bill two times?
An ordinance declaring the official results of the election held in the city of Oak Grove, Missouri on April 8th, 2025 for one alderman of each ward for a two-year term and one alderman for Ward 3 for a one-year term. An ordinance declaring the official results of the election held in the city of Oak Grove, Missouri on April 8th, 2025 for one alderman of each ward for a two-year term and one alderman for Ward 3 for a one-year term.
I move for adoption of Bill Number 25-04.
Second?
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of Bill Number 25-04 to ordinance. Any discussion? If not, City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ciara McMichael.
Yes.
Rachel Kilmer.
Yes.
Tracy Newcomer.
Yes.
Pam Pope.
Yes.
Melissa Johnson.
Yes.
The motion is approved and Bill Number 2504 becomes ordinance number 2131. The next item on the agenda is swearing in our newly elected officials. Ladies, please go to the front when Kim calls you. You want them all at once?
Yes.
Okay.
Rachel, Tracy, and Melissa. And Kelly is absent tonight, so we'll do hers at the next meeting, May 5.
Thank you, Kim.
We don't want this picture.
Okay.
Yep.
You might fix that chair.
Yeah, I can do that.
Good?
Yeah.
I'm just rolling, so you just tell me.
That's one way to do it.
Well, you don't know why, Hannah. There's pictures back here.
Please, Rachel, right here, repeat after me. I state my name.
I will show.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I possess all of the qualifications.
That I possess all of the qualifications.
For the office of legislature office.
For the office of Alderwoman Board of One.
Or Three. At the city of Oak Grove.
At the city of Oak Grove.
That I will faithfully perform the duties.
That I will faithfully perform the duties.
At the office of.
At the office of Alderwoman Board of One.
Or Three. In accordance with the laws of the state of Missouri.
In accordance with the laws of the state of Missouri.
And the ordinances of the city of Oak Grove.
And the ordinances of the city of Oak Grove.
And that I will honorably conduct myself while in office.
And I will honorably conduct myself while in office.
Good job, ladies. You feel different?
Yeah. Two more ears.
The next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding electing a mayor pro tem for the Board of Alderwomen. So, to refresh, the way this works is we openly do it, right, Chris? So anyone, at any point, once I'm done speaking, can make nominations, and then you all will vote on who the mayor pro tem is. So I open the floor for nominations.
I would like to nominate Pam, if you want to. I think you would be a very good leader for us in Dana's absence. You're always very prepared, and you speak very eloquently, and, you know, you're not afraid to ask questions and all the good things.
Okay. I'm going under the knife, I wanted to say. All right, so we, any other nominations? All right, so we have a motion and a second for Pam Pope to serve a one-year term as mayor pro tem. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, you are mayor pro tem. You have another title, yeah. Good job. This is me, the next few here, so you guys just hold tight. Next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding the mayoral reappointment of Tracy Newcomer as the board liaison for the park board. So Tracy graciously accepted another term on the park board. She has a passion for the park board and does a really good job of going to the meetings and would like to serve again. So I'm asking for approval for her to be reappointed to the park board, please.
That's a big time commitment. Thank you for doing that. I think it's important to have that, so. Okay, then we just need a motion.
Yes, I do, yeah.
I make a motion to approve the reappointment of Tracy Newcomer as board liaison to the park board.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to reappoint Tracy Newcomer as board liaison for the park board. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Did you vote for yourself? Okay, good. The next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding the mayoral appointment of Melissa Johnson as the board liaison to the tree board. So, no, I didn't just kick Rachel off of the tree board. Rachel graciously has stepped down. She has a pretty busy schedule, and it's just a timely because Melissa has a passion for trees and landscaping and things like that in cities and everywhere. So she has accepted the nomination for this, and so I'm asking to appoint her to the tree board.
I make a motion that we do approve the appointment of Melissa Johnson to the tree board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Melissa Johnson to the board liaison to the tree board. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding a resolution by the Board of Alderwomen of the city of Oak Grove demonstrating the city's commitment to public safety. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. March of '25, Mayor Kehoe, Governor Kehoe, I'm sorry. Governor Kehoe had, oh, it's, can't, forgot the words of it. Basically, his executive order 2503, which designates Blue Shield Communities, Blue Shield Achievement. This is the designation recognizing and supports local law enforcement efforts to enhance public safety, foster law enforcement support, and encourage community partnerships relative to public safety. We're requesting the resolution as part of that program to apply for our Blue Shield designation. While this does not guarantee grant funding, it is the first step in any grant funding process of have you acquired your Blue Shield designation. The resolution is the only action that we have to ask of the board. Everything else, we're already accomplishing by the fact that we have a recruiting and retention policy already through Lexipol. We have crime fighting agendas, techniques, ideas that are beyond just basic patrol, whether that be LPR systems, HMV grants, DWI grants, and other partnerships with the Drug Task Force and the working with other department groups to solve crime. Also, we are committed to the community and the fact that we have board members or we have department members that are on the Chamber Board, the Ministerial Alliance, and we attend all functions to make sure that the planning and execution of those events have a crime prevention perspective to them and crowd safety endeavor. And so we're asking for the support of the board to apply for the Blue Shield program and also to provide the resolution that says, as a community, we support crime fighting and public safety.
Very nice. Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief, ladies?
Are there certain criteria you have to meet in terms of, like, the way that you guys execute, you know, training or protocols? Is there, like, certain requirements you have to meet to be a part of this? Like, we train people this way, or like, this is how we handle these kinds of traffic stops? Or is it just more about the community involvement?
It's, it really is about making sure that you are thinking about advances in crime fighting, crime prevention, so that you're not stagnant in what you were doing. So that you're always trying to improve. They're not going to dictate how you do something, but they are going to dictate that you report the endeavors that you undertake, which would be something new for us, so that we will have an annual report that is due to the Department of Public Safety that says what we have done in the previous year to make and fulfill the resolution that we're fighting crime in our community, which is a good thing. A lot of cities our size don't have a annual report, and so this would be the first steps of moving to an annual report to be able to show on that basis what we're doing. But they're, you know, they're not going to dictate that this is the new policy. Say, if you go for an accreditation, accreditation would mean that you need to do things a certain way by the standards set out by whatever accrediting body you're going to go to. The Blue Shield program doesn't do that. It more so just wants to make sure that the community is behind the police department, and the police department's behind the community.
Got it. I noticed on the governor's website, there was a bit about reporting data on traffic stops to the state, too. That's part of the annual report?
We already do that, yeah.
Oh, you're already doing that?
Yes. Everything that there's, the whole sentence that you have to, you have to adhere to these, we already apply to every one of those, or else we wouldn't have already received grant funding. So this is just a new tick to that check column.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? I'm just looking for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the adoption of resolution in support of Missouri Blue Shield Program application.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for the Blue Shield Program for the state of Missouri. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And then that becomes Resolution 25-05. The next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding the Webb Park Trail project. Scott?
Yes, and I'd like to first say that the memo probably leaves a little bit out as the recommendation of the green line wasn't to omit any of the other trails. It was just an estimated cost as far as the minor base work and the asphalt cost. So knowing for sure that the green line could get done is what's being recommended. It's up to the board to tell me what else, if we'll try to do more. I know connection from the parking lot, too. The tee ball fields was an important one. I would probably look at the pink being an easier one of the two. For one, the distance. There is fill that has to be done on pink, but there's also fill that needs to be done on yellow. The trees are challenging to work through. There is also a ditch. So this area is more complicated than pretty much all of the green line. So there is some work that needs to be done to make that happen. So estimating the cost on that completely is a little bit more difficult than what the green line was.
Well, I think the diagram's great. So pink, I mean, I know that little bit of a ditch there. Will there have to be a small bridge or something go across there?
Well, we do have a bridge.
Oh, the one that's over by the?
Yep, we've kept from, it used to be along Broadway. So there was some thoughts on how we could implement that into having a neat little bridge that would connect on there. But that has to be designed in, and so I have to, there's some work to make that happen. But we have kept that bridge, and I've always been wondering where we could put it, and I immediately thought that this might be a good location for it. But there's, you know, there's some foundation that needs to go in to make that happen, and why not, right? That's an asset to the city that we've held on to, hoping to find a place to use it, and it seems to be a potentially a good location.
Some foresight.
Yeah.
This looks great. I was just over at the tee ball fields, and it's like so soggy, and I was, so that's gonna be awesome.
Oh, ladies, this is the first step to connectivity. I mean, it's exciting when our citizens through the comp plan asked for it way back when we did strategic plan. When I was on council, we talked about it, and it's just, it's exciting. Any comments or questions about the diagram that Scott has here? Of how that's all going to connect? Does everybody understand it?
I think I do, but if I could just confirm. The rock and compaction, is that similar to what is at the blue line now?
So the blue line is what's called either, you can call it buckshot, or you can call it three eights crusher, which is real fine. It's typically not the ideal stuff to make a base with. There is some, because we had issue over there at the machine pitch field. There is, I think you'll see some gravel in there. We had some wet area with, there's also a French drain that we had to put in to dry. So it kind of got mixed. So that's a little bit different. But usually around the ball fields is that buckshot or that three eights crushed.
And so that's what will be going on, the pink and yellow?
Pink and yellow, no, that's, so when I refer to base, that's typically like your crusher runner, depending on what, how poor the soil is, would determine what kind of base needs to go in. The area around the machine pitch, I put that in blue because it would match the tennis court by doing concrete in that area. So whereas the green and yellow, pink and orange would be asphalt.
I missed that, that it was all going to be asphalt, other than the blue. I'm sorry. Thank you for explaining.
And the choice on that was it can get done quick. You know, we'll have a working trail very quick, and it also will save a little bit of money. The challenging is when you think about trails, asphalt trails, it's very difficult to get a dump truck to where you're paving, and so a lot of times they have to machine every, like, bobcat bucket of asphalt to the paver, which creates an additional cost, but that's part of it.
I think this is a great first thing to do for the parks and since connectivity was the number one thing that people wanted, so, yeah. And I think the layout's great, so.
It is. The way it'll connect up to the school parking lot there, the school and park, shared parking lot, and it'll even get you back up around by the kiss and go and back to the other fields. And, yeah, it's pretty exciting.
I'm thrilled to get rid of the swamp, so.
Scott, this, I mean, I think it looks great. I think you did a really good job. I really liked the outline and everything. This doesn't have to go back to the park board. The ladies can approve it tonight to move forward, correct?
Of course, you're losing all those trees.
No, we've looked at it already. So we, the, there is some concern on the yellow line of some trees, and those are some Osage orange trees, but I'm hoping not too much. And I know that yellow line, the issue with it is we still have those dugouts whenever finished on the tee ball field, and then we don't want to have the asphalt at a slope, so we got to put enough stable area that there's, the trails in place, and people aren't sitting on the, I mean, it's okay if people do, but ideally, you'd have enough space between the fence and the trail that people could still spectate. A bleacher could go in, for example, and you would have a trail that's not having a bleacher sitting right on top of it that would ruin the trail. So there is some work to do in that area to make that work. That's why the pink line is probably the easier first step in that area.
So, yeah, Mayor, for tonight, just looking is the general layout that Scott's proposed meet the board's expectations, and if so, then we'll go out to bid and also compare that to co-op purchases and see which one's a better price. And tentatively, probably the May 19th meeting, when you and the contractor will come back.
Okay. And then if everything goes through, the construction would possibly start this summer sometime? Possibly?
I would probably think typically it'd fall until the fall.
Fall, yeah, fall, okay.
Completed by the end of the year, yes.
Well, it'd probably be pretty hard to do construction during the baseball season.
And it's getting ready to just go crazy.
Yeah, it's gonna go crazy over there, okay.
In fact, this week it starts, so.
Maybe we can put some signs up like we did to get people excited about, you know, if it all passes through.
I love that idea.
All right. Okay, ladies, any other questions? Great discussion.
I make, does it make a motion? I make a motion to approve the trail that is represented on the attached image. Should I say that?
Just the trail project. Because he's got to, you know, send it out for bid, and it'll come back to you guys again. Will you do it again, just so we could do it?
I make a motion to approve the trail project in Webb Park.
Perfect.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Webb Park Trail project. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is information reports. Matt, you didn't get to talk all night, except for right there at the end. Do you have a report?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Chris? And is he out on business or what? I mean, I'm gonna ask it every time he's not here. Is everything okay? Okay, that's all I need to know. Chief, report?
No report.
Okay. Cory?
Just got a quick one. Tomorrow is Earth Day, and so Public Works will be, although we got a busy agenda tomorrow, they'll be collecting, picking up trash along the quadrants of I-70 and Broadway Thursday and Friday, a little bit of both days because there's some rain in there, too. So just be aware, and that's what they're doing if anyone asks, so.
Okay, thank you. Kim? Scott?
This Friday is the Arbor Day celebration. We'll be handing the tree seedlings out at the fieldhouse from four to six. Rain is in the forecast, so if it does get rained out, we will get the trees to the people. Typically, they'll come in throughout the next week and pick the trees up, or a lot of people still show up because we'll bring the tree out to the car, so.
Perfect. Rachel?
No report.
Melissa, that's your first job. You'll be at that on Friday, just so you know.
Okay.
Okay. Do you have a report? No report? Ciara?
No report.
Tracy?
No report.
Pam?
No report.
My only report is congratulations, ladies, on being reelected and stepping up and serving our community. Appreciate it very much. I need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.